Second.
One.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Item is approved. Item's the approval of minutes of May twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. No changes or corrections, questions? Looking for motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Approved. Public comments. Yes.
Okay, so the paper I have was for the draft of the planning master plan. Has that been updated on that website? Oh.
It is still a draft that Bill has.
Okay, so the one on there?
The one on there is still.
Okay.
That's the one that's gonna get approved.
What I wanted to know.
That one is, we got it today. Full draft. You two guys, one for you and a second. Old business, county wide master plan update, that's what we were just talking about. Uh, that public hearing did get postponed until August, so next month, mark your calendars. Full house. At eight. Last Monday.
July seventh, August.
Do we know if the?
It's supposed to be on August sixth.
August sixth.
We have to have it. Problem was, by the time I got the notice to the paper, they said I had to have the fifteen days I had because it was right on the timeline. So we had to postpone it. So I didn't wanna cut it too close, so I told them to publish it. So it's supposed to go in Sturgis, you know, on August sixth.
Didn't see that email from. Well, I had no problem with it. There are another thing, but I hope.
I have responded, I only responded to her.
We're good to go on. August sixth. Seven. Here? Yes. During our, during our normal meeting.
Oh, I know.
I do know that some of the townships are doing their own public hearings.
Yeah.
I did see that.
Okay.
So hopefully that'll.
That H. Township that participated. That's their all.
They got that one.
On the next, we would approve it that night and then send it to the county for final. Our.
Those will approve it. Finally, get it over with.
Yeah, yeah.
Drawn out process.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
He, he did a great job. The other discussions on the county. White mess plan. Okay, moving on, planning commission annual report, I did. Report to the county commission last month. Um, sort of suite. Gonna be sort of sweet when you get five minutes may need. But I, nobody had any questions, so I think it went fine. I did talk to everybody there about. At the, here. Biggest thing that I found out was. Money saved. Doing this. Township. Typically raises from forty-five thousand to a hundred thousand dollars. If you remember when we did. Right, huge amount. Patrick was able to do it for thousands of five thousand. Huge. Huge savings. And the other thing that really got me was. Public debt. And it's seven hundred and thirty acres. Oh, it's pretty good. That was. So you have any questions right now? Work. Moving on to new business, village of Colon, new zoning ordinance. Looks like everything is good there, Patrick says on the whole he can support this whole thing, but there are some questions. Section one definition, there's no diagram for triangular lots. A whole bunch of other diagrams, but not for triangles. Table five dash one. Has a statement in their district should discourage uses in development.
I'm thinking.
That was really weird.
Yeah.
That was really weird.
Something's left out there.
Yep. So they better take a look at that. Uh, table five two doesn't list mobile home parks or manufactured housing developments. Remember right? They don't have to have a mobile home park as long as there's one adjacent, is that correct?
Well, they have to have in a written agreement with the neighboring community.
Yeah.
Add it, that has adequate space for both.
Okay, well, apparently they didn't even address that at all. They do have a mobile. Bush in. In the si- uh, village?
Um. I'd be hard on the line, isn't it?
Uh, table five three, wind and solar facilities are not listed in any district. Maybe he was wondering if they're just allowed as an accessory. Uh, section twelve, twelve point four. Harking requirements, he says, looks like they're based on old nineteen fifties requirements. So they might wanna take a look at that. I'm sure there's been a bunch of changes. And article fourteen, FEMA flood plain. Those areas of the. Flood hazard zone. I do see a comment that Ed Dell was contacted. You got anything to say on that?
Well, they thought maybe they presented that to me and I can handle it for them. Proper way to take.
Okay.
Communicate.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I write them a little bit on some of their issues from time to time. Back to me.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? If not, we're looking to send this on. A move that we send it on.
I'll support.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Areas. Next is. Country recreational authority. Parks and Recreation Plan, I think, uh, did a pretty good job on that. Have comments on that?
It was very impressive. Past few years, they've done a lot of cooperation.
Next item, citizen interest forms, two applications, one vacancy. This is odd, Mary. We've gone years.
With several.
No, I think, I think it's a decade.
Yeah, probably, probably.
Okay, who wants to go first? I think we had yours last. I talked about it last time. Um, uh. What did you need to know? Anything you wanna just tell us if you wanna pass, pass? No, no, I'm, I'm glad that, uh, I wanna thank you guys for, uh, doing what you did on this master plan. Definitely saved our township a lot of money. Uh, I got the first glimpse of the whole. New. Updated version that goes to twenty twenty nine. Doug Coleman. That on our website and I was sad to hear that. Retired now, he told us that October would be our last meeting. He did throw a few things together, a lot of these solar panels that are going in, they're in different. Townships. Positions, we did have to update ours because a lot of them now want canisters. Storage batteries, about the size of a shipping container, maybe four or five, we did not have that now. As far as, uh, what we originally agreed to, so we had to add that, we're gonna add that. And we did a couple of things on M sixty, Durkin's piping, wanted to put in the building. Uh, since I got a hold of the master plan, I was really impressed with how that looked and I only saw it for a first time Monday. I've gone over it a couple of times, it's very thorough. I was surprised how much information, and I'm sure you guys have went through, I was surprised to see that our township and most of the townships have lost population. And our county has lost population and, you know, little things in their life. How much poverty is in this, I didn't realize if it'd all be in the master plan. Said that, set aside for the farm preservation, same thing for the water, whoever did that for us did a great job, I don't know who that was, Bob.
That was Patrick Cupp.
Institute.
All Central Michigan Planning County. And then, uh, have you guys any heard any rumors who's gonna replace Doug because he's been with us and, you know, he's been doing that for seventeen, eighteen years. Wealth and knowledge and it's gonna be hard to replace him. But yeah, that's all, I'm just interested in the job here, like I said last time, I talked to all of you. I asked Pat and she said, I did not need a resume, so, uh, same thing, but. How we know who we are. That's all I've got, thanks Bob.
Thank you.
Introduce yourself, whoever.
Yeah, my name's Derek EBS, I just moved here, uh, from Fortage back in October. I own a couple of small businesses that I run with my wife from our home here.
What are the small businesses?
Different thing, uh, custom bottled water, irrigation parts and custom industrial labels. Totally random, what's that?
Sell labels?
Yep. They're all contract manufactured, that's why we're able to run them. Anyway, just like if I'd moved here in October, I would evolve somehow, started looking at the website. Fill out the interest form, uh, the planning commission, found it interesting. Heard about a couple of boards here and there, HOA board, et cetera. Hoping to kind of start learning how all this works. Much more knowledgeable on, on everything, I would be. Normal person, so. Yeah, would love to join or wait or get on a different commission if there's, uh, another.
What you said on your application. Home address is Sturgis.
Well, so on Lake Templain, the address is Sturgis.
Oh, okay.
I think of it as being centered around, I mean, five, seven minutes away.
Okay.
Yeah, it's funny.
I am part township and I live on Springer Road and so, uh, you know, I've been on a lot of boards recruited. From the county, I mean, Rick knows how, I mean, I used to be on the workforce development board for twenty years. All these things that people don't wanna do because you almost have to be retired to do them because there's so many meetings. I had to drop out because of COVID, because they required that I had Zoom and I live in an area where I have no high speed, no fiber.
But you live in Saint Joe County.
Oh, correct, yeah, I've been, I've been in Saint Joe County for fifty years.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, the only, uh, thing that is confusing is, is even though I'm in part township, Saint Joe County, we have a mailing address of Pittsburgh. Pittsburgh, you know, their school district, we've got three counties involved and sixteen townships, so it's, it's spread out.
I thought that was the other.
And the road that I live on is not a county road, it belongs to Kalamazoo County. Put them up every other mile, you know, just that way you're not being unfair, unfair to one county because they have to do the whole county line, so. Forever the county touches and I just happen to live on that mile section where it's lost to Kalamazoo County. Any other questions, Pam? Well, we have one opening and two applicants. Does anybody want to make a?
Well, I have a comment, Mr. Chairman. Rick came to us two months ago and attended a meeting and so at that point. I took it just upon myself as an individual, reach out to two board members on the road commission. To feel for, you know, Rick's attendance, his involvement, his willingness to participate. So I first contacted, and they both said, feel free to. Contacted Eric Schaper. Eric's comment was, if there was any kind of continuing education relative to road commission business. Rick was right there attending outside. Educational thing. Brand of. Eric was really. Willingness to be active. And so then I reached out to Rod Chuck. Rod said basically about the same thing. Rod's comment though was. He would in-depth study issues. Bring them back to the board for understanding of everybody. And I didn't know if Derek's interest until actually. I would have done the same thing with you, Derek, had I, had I realized that you had interest. Well. Needs to hear of your willingness. All. That's what I have to share.
I just have one. We're all getting up at age, we're all not young anymore and we need.
I am.
I'm old too. We need some young blood to continue on, so. We just have to keep that in mind too, but just because there's only one vacancy now, I know there's several members that have expressed they can't do this forever. So I would like that person to be considered within the. Everybody's terms expire every three years and it was January first. So come January first, we're gonna have three members. Fire and it'll be on September that they want. So there's potential down the road that there will be. Odd because we had this vacancy here and all of a sudden we got two applicants.
Very strange.
And at that time you bring up their forelawn, K. June.
Yeah, it's so high.
Any other comments?
Well, you mentioned.
Yep.
Yes. Greg, um, I don't, not everybody was here, but Greg called me, he had a heart attack on Father's Day. Hospital like. Alice is now and. So he's hoping that all the stuff will get worked out, but right now. Try for anything.
Whose terms are up in January?
The trainer.
Mark, Doug and Warren. Mine is up and I'm not gonna review.
One sixteen.
Yes.
Well, we have a new guy right here. I, I, what, twenty-seven years I've been on here? I'm, I know I'm high as seniority.
No, I'm higher than you.
Well. You made more. But I'm ready to give it up. I, I had my hip replaced this past winter, I have to have my knee done this winter and I'm. I'm cutting back, I'm getting out of the hog business, I'm on my last group of pigs, I'm gonna be sixty-eight and I'm. Falling down and I'm, I'm ready to give this up.
Okay, so.
Let's say.
Well, yes, I'll be glad to help somebody. The PA one sixteen really is not a big deal. Look through it, make sure. But if you can hang in there till. One of you hang in there till January, you can have my spot. My wife will be glad to know that I finally told this. Jimmy died, this was her first year of retirement from teaching, she taught in Spurgis for thirty years. But she's retired and I told her I would start.
That's absolutely. Congratulations.
Yeah, we started in the basement of the courthouse.
Yep.
And I was.
That's where my first job was. Our house was for the planning department.
Three nine eleven.
Yeah, then they had to have a guard. And we moved to the building behind. I think we met in the old jail a couple of times too.
I don't remember that.
In the brick building to the. Then they had that four H that met in there.
I know they. Park slugged that building, I think it's not there.
We had to go upstairs to the middle. Remember that? But anyways, that's my resignation.
Well, that's not, and I think you might have been on camera, so. Get hogs out of the barn, so to speak. Well.
We'll get along fine. So we're looking for a nomination to go over to the commissioners.
Guys have to act on it.
But you wanna make a nomination, send it over? Yeah.
I think I'd recommend. At the same time, I'd say very.
Come to every meeting from now until the end.
Well, if we get a PA one sixteen, the application to. We don't typically get too many of them in the fall. It's a tax, they're, they're prompted by tax season. Um, I don't, I don't know if you're familiar at all with PA one sixteen, it's a program in which farmland can be enrolled in that, uh. If your adjusted gross income is such level, you get rebated your property tax money from the state. You still pay your taxes at the township level, then when you file your income tax return to a PA one sixteen form, it goes in with your. Personal income tax and eventually the state will.
Eventually.
Refund your money, it's through the Michigan Department of Agriculture. And there are several versions of that program. It's been a, the benefit locally is, is that by you signing up for PA one sixteen, you say that you're not gonna develop your land. You're gonna leave it as agricultural land. Uh, there is a loophole, you can get out and if you get out. In the terms of your contract, you have to pay back seven years' worth of benefits. Um, which is, it's kind of silly because if you weren't in, you'd be paying it anyways. If you wanna get out, the new owner can continue with the same contract, but if the new owner doesn't wanna develop. Is purchasing it for agricultural purposes, the same contract can carry on and there is no penalty. And the other thing is, is if you think you want out, stop claiming the benefits for seven years and. You get out free. And you can sign up for ten years or ninety-nine years. Now, we, we donated our developmental rights to the state, which is a different program, but by doing that. We still get to participate in the PA one sixteen. But we're still in the, we're, we're technically not in the PA one sixteen program, but since we gave our developmental rights to the state, they still let us participate. We still get our tax money. I have a land presentation. Well. There again, there's like four different programs in which you can develop, we, we got an income tax. By donating, we had to have our land appraised. And at that time, there was a, you know, a difference between developmental land and agricultural land, which today that ban is shrinking greatly. Um, so the difference between the two would be what you would sell your developmental rights for and since we didn't take any money. We donated, then we got to take that off of our taxes for five years. So there was a benefit at the time when we participated in that. The county actually has their own. Purchase of developmental rights program too, but I think Henry Miller is the only person that, and he donated his share of the. Those he's back. Gonna be missed. Well, we have a nomination before us for Richard Henderson. Send him over to the board of commissioners. Pointment to the planning commission. I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion period.
We'll see you for next meeting.
Yeah.
Intern.
Yeah, there you go.
And if you are serious and we get a PA one sixteen, I think it'd be great if you could come that evening and. Um, you can read through the application. I, I would be willing to bet that at least fifty percent of the agricultural land in Saint Joe County is either enrolled in PA one sixteen or was enrolled at one time.
The, the state website is really lagging.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it's horrible. I look, I tried to find a bunch of information. Board meeting. Out there.
They don't have it.
Yeah, M D R had a freeze, higher freeze on for a long time, so they are so short staffed. You know, Brad Newman, we had an extension agent that specialized in land use and Brad was work, well, at that time, Tim Peterson was also in the soil conservation district. Office and the two of them were trying to put together a map that showed all of the land in PA one sixteen. Finished as far as I know. That time it was a pretty good number and we've had a lot of.
Lot of.
Applications. All right, the next item on the agenda is informational items, we got a letter from Doug Coolman, retiring. Another hole.
I've been on all sides of the council. In the county. Or something. I'm just thinking it might be a nice gesture if the board were to send him. Her best. How wishes.
That's a good idea.
That can. I may not stop doing. Bad, that's what I'm gonna say. You okay, I just think it's. We have done a lot.
I heard about this, when we get something from a town. Type of a thing, all the same thing. All different now? That could be a problem.
It just depends on who takes it.
Yep. Yep. Once we got it. Fix the next townships because they were all the same.
He was good at standardizing.
Oh, yeah.
Cause it made his life easy.
Cut and paste.
Yeah.
Any other informational items, announcements? Don't like the announcement.
I know, I know.
Looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most same sign.
Got Bob in there, but he did get approved by the county.